The Stillwater Planning Commission meeting of December 2nd will now come to order. It will be the process this evening to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff first, then the applicant and/or their representative. Then we will open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. And before closing the public hearing, both staff, the applicant, and/or their representative will be provided an opportunity to respond to provide additional information and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed. And then we will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. First item on the agenda this evening are general orders, and this is to review an alternative building material. We'll hear from staff.
Yes ma'am. Ms. Chair Commissioners, good evening. My name is Henry B. Beilheimer with Development Services. And tonight we're looking at an alternative compliance request for 111 West Miller Avenue. This is in the Form Based Code area, T5 or transect 5. Here's the aerial view of the property outlined in pink. This is on the southeast corner of Miller and Husband, just on the west side of Brown's Bottle Shop. Here are the approved elevations, so there's an approved building permit for the site. These are the elevations that were submitted and approved previously. These do meet the facade requirements for the Form Based Code area. As you can see, there is brick veneer for the top of the buildings, and then there's a stone veneer on the bottom with this black portion in the middles, sure in the middles, being dark ephesus veneer. So, the applicant has proposed alternatives that were submitted for different exterior facades. There are two different options that we're looking at tonight. The applicant is not requesting to use both materials, they're asking to use one or the other. So, this first material we're looking at, which is their preferred material, is LP wood lap siding. So, this is what that would look like. In these facades, they've taken off the, what did I call it? The stone veneer on the bottom of the buildings and replaced it with this painted brick. The front of the buildings are painted brick for the majority, and then there's that LP wood lap siding in the windows where the ephesus was. And then on the sides, we have this LP wood lap siding as well. So, this is alternative number one, the one the applicant would prefer. There's also the second option. If we didn't like the wood siding, there's the hardy lap siding. Looks very similar to the last picture where we don't have that stone veneer, but we have that painted brick veneer for the same portions, and we have this hardy lap siding in between. This is on the front facade, and then on the sides, we have that hardy on the top there. So, as a part of this, just showing you some of the facades around the building. So, this is west of the property across Husband. There's some brick and stone veneer. Looking north across Miller, we have some siding on some residential properties. Then directly east of the property, we have Brown's Bottle Shop. This is Main looking west, which we'll call it an ephesus. Then we have the street view. We have south of the property across Virginia, we have some brick and siding as well. So, these are just some context of the surrounding materials that have been used. So, staff findings. Section 23, 449 allows for the planning commission to allow alternative materials in the Form Based Code area. The original Form Based Codes adopted in 2015 allowed cement fiber board as facade materials. The Form Based Code updated in 2019 no longer included that cement fiber board on the list of approved facade materials. Cement fiber board and LP engineered wood siding are not listed in the code as prohibited materials, which does mean that the planning commission can approve them with this alternative compliance request. I'm going to answer any questions if you have any.
I have a few questions for staff. Can you tell me when you showed the context photos, how many of those were constructed after the transect had been put in place with the requirements?
Don't believe any of them were, except maybe this apartment complex. I'm not sure when that was constructed.
Okay. And then my other question would be, given the setbacks on the property and the fact that this was permitted with brick veneer all the way around, do the two alternative materials that we're looking at tonight, do they meet all the fire resistant requirements based on the setbacks and adjacency to property lines?
That's a good question. I'm not sure if those facades were a part of that firewall that would be required. I can say that's something that would be reviewed by our building department and our fire department. We do have an external reviewer as well that reviews all that for fire safety. So, I can't say for sure if this would affect that, but I can say that if it were to be approved to be installed, it would have to be reviewed to make sure it didn't negatively affect it.
Okay, so if there's an approval this evening that would go back through the process for the plan reviewers to amend or, okay.
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
And the applicant is present and might have more information on that as well.
Okay. All right. That's all I have for staff.
So, I think the Form Based Code...
Is meant to create a masonry dominant urban durable street character. If we approve this, do you think that materially changes the Form Based Code for this corridor? And if not, why? Why do you think that?
That's a good question. I do think the front facade being primarily brick does lend itself to that masonry facade that we're going for, for that Form Based Code area. I don't know a lot of details about that wood lap siding and whether that would fit the vibe that they're going for. But I do know that it would help that at least on that street facing side, it would still be primarily brick. I did say on the street facing side, that would be the north side. The south side, there's a parking lot, and then another street along the south. So, you could argue the south side of the building would also be rather visible from that southern street. So, just for transparency, that's also there.
The height of the building would be fairly visible from Main Street as well on the east side.
Yes, that's a good point.
And then it's on the corner, so the west side is also fairly visible.
Sure is. Yeah. It's a good point as well.
So, staff didn't have a recommendation for approval or denial? I'm kind of curious about that.
Yes, sir. Without much knowledge of the different materials, we thought that planning commission was best equipped to decide whether this was appropriate for the Form Based Code area. We didn't think it was very clear one way or the other, so we went ahead and just didn't make that recommendation, so you guys could determine.
Fair enough. I'm not entirely sure about this, but I think the Form Based Code only allows wood as trim, accent, and not as a primary wall material, and that would be a direct code conflict if we approved that, right?
Yes, sir. I was told before we move forward that this was not actually a wood siding. It's, I don't know the best words to describe this, but it's a, what do you call it? Not real material.
Synthetic.
There you go. It's a synthetic material that I believe is made to look like a wood. There we go.
Sorry. I mean, David Barth with Development Services, and Gary might be able to elaborate more. It's been a while since I've looked at this, but LP is, Louisiana Pacific is just a brand name, but it's basically oriented strand board, you know, smart lap siding. So, I think is what they used to call it, but basically it's an engineered wood. So, it's not solid wood like you might see of older wood siding materials. It's an engineered product that's pre-primed, and then they paint it, and yeah. I just thought I would add that. I also thought I would add one other thing, because you asked about the pictures, and I think I brought this up when we had another, a similar situation where a developer had asked for alternative materials in the Form Based Code. When you see projects, or when you see, sorry, houses or apartments that have siding, for someone who wants to re-side their house, they don't have to get a permit for that. So, there's nothing that prevents somebody from taking a house with vinyl siding or wood siding and replacing that vinyl siding or wood siding in the Form Based Code area, because they're just performing maintenance. So, I know this is different. They're building something new, but, so I think there's, all that to say, I think that you would continue to see different materials than what were prescribed or are prescribed in the Form Based Code in that area, just because people will be doing maintenance instead of building something new, and they can use whatever materials they had on their house to begin with. There's, because there's nothing that forces you to change your materials just to do maintenance.
So, if I might have a follow-up question to your statement?
Sure.
So, you're talking about replacement of same for an existing structure that predates the Form Based Code, correct?
Yes.
So, if a building that's constructed after the Form Based Code needs to have maintenance, then are you saying that there's now, in my words, a loophole? The material could be changed to something that no longer complies?
I think so. I mean, you know, if you had a, for example, a brick structure, and let's say that a portion of it burned or something like that, and then they...
You have a tornado and takes the veneer off, right?
Yeah, whatever. And they decided to replace some of the area with siding. And we would have to look at that, but, because that's getting outside of maintenance, and it would be considered new construction. I believe our code talks about when something's more than 50% damaged, then you have to comply with the current codes at the time. So, if it weren't, you know, less than 50% damaged, maybe they could, it would be considered maintenance. I'm just saying, you know, there's, if you have siding, whether it's wood or vinyl, doesn't really matter, on an existing structure, and somebody wanted to replace that siding, there's nothing that they would have to do with us at the city to put new materials. And you wouldn't have the foundational support either. You know, those houses that have siding don't have a footing for brick or stone. So, you'd be creating a real hardship on somebody for their home to have to ask them to put up stone or brick for, you know, a hundred-year-old house that has wood siding on it, just because they were replacing the siding. So, I'm not trying to throw a wrench in anything, just to, you know, when you look at the pictures of surrounding areas, and yeah, I believe every single one of those structures that Henry showed were built before the Form Based Code, including that apartment complex.
But it seems like the Form Based Code, though, would be to trend in a certain direction over time, that you'd want it to look like this as things got torn down and rebuilt.
Yeah.
So, I get it that the maintenance of something that exists wouldn't really be impacted, but anything that comes up as new, you'd want to align with that.
Anything that's new, and there's maintenance, they'd have to still be in compliance with the Form Based Code.
Okay.
So, they wouldn't, I think that's where we might disagree, David, is that anything that comes, that's built after this Form Based Code was adopted, and there's maintenance on that building, they would have to still be in compliance. However, if it was existing building before the Form Based Code was adopted, and there was maintenance, and that's what David is saying, that they would not have to now become in compliance.
So, yeah. Okay. So, for instance, as we're talking kind of through what is and isn't allowed on something that's approved under the Form Based Code. So, looking at the memorandum, we're referencing chapter 23 there, and that first item lists the approved materials. So, say someone had some ephesus or some stucco, and they wanted to do maintenance and replace it with siding that was wood or vinyl or something, then what we're saying is, because that doesn't comply with Form Based Code, they'd have to go back with any material that did comply?
No. What I'm saying is, any new structures that are erected after this Form Case was adopted, they'd have to be in compliance with their materials or get exemption. However, if there's maintenance, they would have to still comply with these materials.
Okay.
But if the building was already existing prior to this Form Based Code, they would not have to come in compliance. If they had siding before, they could keep having re-siding if there was maintenance needed.
And I would only add that unless they got an exception on those materials...
Originally, and then their maintenance could continue that same exception.
Yes, exactly.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Do you know if we've approved LP or hardy as an alternative compliance in the Form Based Code district before?
To my knowledge, there's been one, that hardy cement fiber board that's been used on one other project that was approved as an alternative compliance. I don't believe, I have not seen any applications for the wood lap siding similar to this, so I don't have any context for that one. I don't believe it's been brought before you, but there are probably a lot of cases I don't know about.
Yeah, gotcha.
Do you have any other questions for staff? Give the applicant an opportunity to come forward and maybe provide a little bit more information.
Thank you all. We are asking for, yes, alternative materials, one or the other, partly due to just the look that we want to go for. There is some cost involved in brick and stone especially. And there is some concerns about the availability of subcontractors to do those products in large amounts. We did want to stay consistent as much as possible with the Form Based Code, so we did take Miller Street, which is probably 85, 90% brick, along with, again, the LP siding is the preferred choice of the two products, both of them being out of the compliance. But it is, I would emphasize, this is an engineered wood product. There's lots of resins and different things that makes it, helps prevent termites, helps prevent rotting. It has got a very lengthy, very lengthy warranty, equal or better than the cement hardy siding. It, we have chose even on the sides to go up about 50% with brick, then the siding. On the back, the bottom two feet would be brick instead of siding. And that is a construction that we prefer due to potential moisture. Also, maintenance from either one of those products, I would say, is more susceptible to, especially the hardy board. If a lawnmower or a weed eater hits it, it's a very brittle product. It can break. It's even shown some issues with earthquakes, cracking it, and needing it replaced. It's more difficult to work with. The fiber in it is, we have to take some extra precautions in the fiber cement product as far as the workers because of the dust that's created from that product. So, our LP is our preferred choice. We feel like we're taking measures to protect by keeping everything on the lower level brick on all four sides that would be adjacent to the ground or concrete. I would say that one of the pictures that was shown was a little two-story building. I don't know if you can pull that one back up, but it was right across the street. That, and I don't know, I don't know, yes, the one that's kind of got a yellow creamy tone. I don't know all the particulars about the permitting of that, but that was just completed within the last month or two with complete cement siding. I walked across the street and checked it. So, that was a complete remodel, interior and exterior remodel, that was done with cement siding. To my knowledge, they did not ask for alternative materials. And again, you'd spoke of some things. I don't know if that falls inside or outside. I wasn't able to follow exactly, but that was just completed. One block north of here, a large project, I believe it's 16, two-story townhomes, was just completed for August move-in. It's 99%, and that's not inaccurate, it's 99% cement siding. There is a small portion of brick on the front. It's, I don't know if any of y'all were here, but that was submitted in the, to an alternative product setting, and it was approved. And I wasn't present at that meeting, so I don't know exactly why that was approved, but it has been done, to my knowledge, on a remodel, on a new construction project in the last year, twice. So, we feel like because of cost constraints, availability of a product, and particularly not product, but employee, brick masons and so forth, we're trying to hold as true to the Form Base as we can by keeping the front primarily. We're still using, and either, the reason I submitted both is I believe that both of them are very good products. Don't get me wrong. We like the LP product better. We feel like it's every bit as good of a product for longevity. It's easier to work with, it's more available, it's something that our local lumber yards stock at a high volume. The cement siding is a special order product that we'd have to bring in, but both of them, well-maintained, are exceptional options. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a few questions. So, thank you for providing the technical information that we had requested. One of the questions I had that I didn't see, it was a rather lengthy submission...
Yes, the LPs.
And what I was trying to find is, what is the moisture barrier for the LP product? It lists, and I went to YouTube before we got the technical bulletin and watched the YouTube on the manufacturing process. So, it's OSB. It's got the resins, it's got wax, I think there's a zinc borate or something in it.
Yes.
And it has some type, it looks like some type of paper material, or what is that moisture layer?
Again, my knowledge of the technical data is probably much like yours. It has a, the zinc borate includes binders, waxes. There's a resin saturated overlay to protect against moisture, fungus, decay, and termites. It has a 30 to 50-year warranty, you know, depending on, you know, different variables, obviously. The substructure is, we're using the zip wall system, which is the green, basically a treated subwall material that you use, and it's approved by...
Moisture barriers, yeah.
Moisture barrier, yes, with the zip tape, and it is approved by both of these products as a substance. And then there's other things for, you have to do between the seams to allow, you know, for extra protection, so.
So, I think that's still the question I have, is in looking at the material, there's a little diagram that says that there's some kind of moisture layer, moisture barrier layer that goes on top of this item, on top of the LP product, as well as the zip barrier, the zip product that's the moisture barrier behind it, and then this goes on top of it. But it's got another layer on it, and that's, that would be the finish layer.
There's not anything on the exterior like...
That's not the way, that's not the way the product material reads, and it's not the way that I was watching the, I was watching the YouTube product manufacturing process. It has another material that's laid on top of it once the OSB is done.
In the manufacturing, you're saying?
The manufacturing process, right.
Okay. I was speaking out on the field.
Right. No, manufacturing process. And then I think then there was kind of another question I had on the product itself. So, there's LP siding, the LP product engineered wood, it has several different finishes on it? What was the finish?
Yeah, so you can get the LP siding along with the hardy siding. You can get that in just a pre-primed, where you paint it a color of choice, or you can get that in a pre-painted option. We have chosen the primed, and we would paint on site.
And then the texture would, what would the texture be?
It has a wood grain texture as far as the visual component of it, yes.
Because I think for me, that has some impact on how this look is...
Yeah. Both of those products would be that way. They would have, they do offer more of a smooth option now. I know LP has just came out with that. That's not the product of choice.
Okay. I'm going to look through here and allow Mr. Prather to ask some questions, and I may have a couple more.
Sure. I would like to mention also, something was brought up about the fire, and I don't know all the code, but we are, excuse me, we are a sprinkled facility. We will have a fire suppression system, so.
That's big.
Yeah. And it's a wood-framed building, so I feel like the siding side of it, or the brick side, either way, is not a big issue there.
So, I, I mean, based on the somewhat limited research I did, that the hardy was in the original 2015 Form Based Code, and wood is restricted to trim only. So, there is a distinction there.
Sure.
So, I guess I'm curious, Gary, if we said on the front-facing, we would allow hardy, or we would allow hardy everywhere, but the LP we wouldn't allow on the front, would that be helpful? Or would you use hardy everywhere because you did it on the front, or?
Well, like I said, I submitted it both ways because I'm comfortable with both products. We prefer the LP product just because of availability, of the ease to work with, from, you know, there's just extra measures that we need to take with employees with the hardy. But, but yeah, I don't know that, like, doing the LP on the front and hardy everywhere else or vice versa necessarily. I mean, I guess it would, there's very little siding on the front, whether it's, I mean, it's just really used as an accent, where on the back it is more of, you know, a visual from Virginia.
It just, it does seem like it's a bigger ask for the LP from the code.
Sure. I understand. The term wood being written out, and this is an engineered wood product, is, I think, the discrepancy or the difference. It's an engineered product that has, that does have a wood fiber core, but has, you know, additives to make it longer lasting and better for conditions, so.
Makes sense.
I did find the diagram, this diagram that has this overlay layer. That's the thing, I can't seem to find any data as to what it is.
Yeah, no either. But it's overlays.
Yeah. It's hard to know what it is. In the YouTube video that's referenced on the same page, they call it a moisture overlay barrier.
Okay. Yeah. I'm not sure what that technical data of that means, so.
So, since the code has a requirement for high-quality, long-lasting, do you think one of these two products is, fits that better?
No.
Kind of equal?
In my opinion, they're an equal product. Both having, you know, pluses and minuses probably in certain areas. Like I said, I think the major difference, we have worked with both. I would tell you that, I would say easily, 90% of the homes that we do in the custom home world, which is my primary job, is the LP product. And 90% is not a stretch in this town. The cement board is just, it's more difficult to work with. I don't like the brittleness of it because it's a cement fiber. It's, it cracks, it breaks easier. That's the part of it that I'm not as crazy about.
Is that typically during installation, or is that, is that after it's installed, it's more likely to?
I've seen it both. If you get high winds... I've, I've seen it both. Um, if you get high winds, you can, you know, if you get any movement in that, the fasteners at the overlay point-
Okay.
It can loosen at that, at that point a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, so, the, the wood is a little more forgiving. Uh, the wood, engineered wood product is a little more forgiving in that way. Um, so, it's, uh, they both paint and hold paint very well. I don't see any difference in, in the two holding paint, in the longevity there. Thanks.
Okay, I have a couple more questions here, so, um, for the, so the plans have, the plans have been approved with the brick.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I believe it, it's already under construction, correct?
It is.
It is?
Yeah.
Um, does the foundation that you're building, will, will it support the weight of the brick?
Yes.
If you go the three stories, and then that accounts for all the relief angles that go in for the brick?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, and I, I, I can appreciate the difficulty in trying to find masons in the market. It seems to be something I've struggled with for twenty-five years in the market, so it-
Yeah, we feel confident with the amount that we have proposed, that we can complete that successfully. Uh, it would be double that amount-
Mm-hmm.
-if we go all brick or, or stone, uh, in this case, so.
I, I, I think for the, for the LP, um, product, I'm, I'm not as familiar with it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the Hardy plank I'm very familiar with, it's on my house, so I'm very familiar with it. And it's getting ready to go on eleven years, so no problems with it, I really like it. Um, for the Hardy plank, it, it's, it's a cementitious fiber, so to me, it's more in keeping with kind of the spirit of where we, where we're going.
Sure.
How, how the Form Base Code has been written. And I, I am curious why it was taken out at one point.
And I don't, you know, I don't know the history of, of the buildings around, but I do know that the apartment complex that was shown right across husband, the front, which faces husband and Miller, is kind of a, almost a decorative cinder block bottom with brick above. But if you walk into that complex, it's cement siding on the back.
I think those are all the questions that I have. Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Yeah, staff, present our alternatives and findings.
Yes ma'am, so the alternatives tonight are to approve the LP engineered wood siding, to approve the James Hardy cement fiber, to deny the request, or to table a request for a future meeting.
Thank you.
Well, I don't, I don't have a problem at all with the Hardy, but I think the question is the LP, to me. It, uh, seems to weaken the, uh, Form Base Code's purpose. It would be tough to deny one in the future.
Agreed.
Um, so those, I mean, possibly you could allow it on, on non-public facing, some of the, you know, the sides of the back. That's a question, but, um, anyway, that's kind of where, where I land, is. I mean, there's good arguments for the LP, it's just, so, it seems to be specifically not part of the FBC.
Right. I, I think there's been, you know, a lot of, um, thought that's gone into the Form Base Code, and I think some of the acknowledgements that have come out of this recent planning effort is that there are some parts of that Form Base Code that need some massaging, and I know that that's underway. Um, but I, my, I don't think that, that, those comments would apply to this materials section. I think the materials section, um, needs to be adhered to as, as closely as we can. Um, and, and I think it's, it's there for a specific reason, to give a specific kind of substance to this, this transect T-five area. Um, those are my thoughts.
I just think, because the cement fiber board was included in 2015, and for some reason omitted in 2019, and I think that gives it the edge, um, in, in our decision, so.
Would you, are we, anyone thinking of a motion, or some more comment?
I would move to approve the James Hardy fiber cement lap siding as an alternative compliance material for the upper story and rear elevations, and to deny the request to use LP smart site engineered wood siding.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. Motion passes five-zero. We'll now move into the public hearing section, and the first item on our agenda is, um, a small lot, single-family residential, RSS zoning, preliminary plat, and we show her staff.
Yes ma'am, we have a preliminary plat for McElroy Park, which is addressed as 2002 East McElroy Road. Here's an aerial view of the property, outlined in pink. This is just west of the northwest corner of Jardo and McElroy. Here's the street view of the property, this is McElroy looking north, northwest. Um, you can see the existing single-family house on the property that would be torn down to build this proposed subdivision. Here's the zoning of the property, where you can see the zoning on the parcel we're discussing is RSS, or small lot, single-family residential. To the north and northwest, you have RSL, which is large lot, single-family residential. And to the east, you have CS, or commercial shopping. Here's the proposed preliminary plat that we're discussing tonight. This is a fourteen lot, um, single-family residential subdivision, with one outlot to the north, which also has the proposed detention facility. Um, we did see a, um, a different residential project proposed on this property earlier this year. Um, it was called Cowboy Landing, there was a proposed PUD or plan unit development. Um, that property did include nineteen twenty-four East McElroy, which is to the west of this property. Um, this proposed preliminary plat has excluded that, so that would stay a single-family residence as it currently is. And then this is just for that eastern property, or the 2002 East McElroy. The proposed subdivision does meet all the standards of the, of the RSS, or small lot, single-family residential, um, zoning district. I'm open to answering any questions if you have any.
I'll, I'll, I'll test your memory and see, and I don't know if you had a chance to look through that or not. Um, when it included the other parcel of land, do you remember how many units were on there? And if you don't, then maybe the applicant can answer that later.
It changed a few times with different layouts. Um, I don't remember what the final answer is, but my guess is gonna be forty-two, cause I know that was one of the numbers, but I don't know if that was the final number.
So the density has changed dramatically from?
Yes ma'am, density now aligns with code.
Okay. That was all I have for staff, any other questions for staff? Thank you. At this time, we'd allow the applicant to come forward and provide any other information.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Saife Lucy, two zero zero two, East McElroy Road. Uh, first, I want to say thank you very much, because when we reached this stage last time, you guys believed in what we were trying to create here, in creating homes, and so you approved the forty-two units that we had proposed. Now, going through all this process, we've worked tirelessly with the community, and we're, we're actually very appreciative of how much effort was put in by the, the neighbors. And, to be honest with you, actually, the staff here too, put a lot of work into this. So, we're grateful for where we were with that project and what happened. Um, we, we tried working it to make it thirty-two units, unfortunately, that didn't work, which is fine. We thanked our neighbors, which we hope you all saw that in the notice and the, the newspapers and so forth. We've come back, we gotta do something with this property. And so, we feel that the fourteen units fits within what the scope was of, you know, the ruling and the, the code and all this, we've had the engineers involved. I think this piece of property has a lot of knowledge and a lot of eyes on it. Um, and I think Stillwater needs homes. I mean, this is critical that's happening right now, and we, we see it. So, I'm here to ha, answer any other additional questions that my neighbors might have. Again, we appreciate the time that they've come out here to do this. Um, and again, you know, I think the, the number of people have drastically changed, so we do appreciate everyone's time. Do you guys have any questions, or?
Any questions? No, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and with that, we'll open the public hearing, and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this project to come forward? Sure.
Good evening, uh, members of the planning commission. Um, I don't see a timer, are we still doing?
Sorry, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm about to. Okay, my name is Simon Ringsmith, uh, one seven zero five East Linda Avenue. And I don't see a timer, do we have a timer tonight?
She's very excited.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you, thank you, all right.
It just won't show, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I speak only on behalf of myself, I don't represent my organization, any organization. I don't represent my neighbors, my opinions are my own. Um, last time I was here, uh, emotions were running pretty high in the room, and there was a lot of anxiety, uncertainty, and fear in the room. Tonight, things are a lot different. Um, and I wanted to be present at this meeting to publicly express my gratitude uh, to Stephen Gose, to Saife Lucy, to, uh, the staff here at City Hall, the property owners, all the parties involved to get us to where we are today. Um, back in June, there was a huge amount of opposition to Cowboy Landing, because it was a proposed pud, um, and it didn't fit with zoning. And one repeated theme, theme throughout much of what was said in opposition was that we, the neighbors, were not opposed to development. It's not that we don't want this land to be developed, we just want it to be responsibly developed in a manner that is consistent with existing neighborhoods. And McElroy Park does that. And I'm so thankful to what got us here today. Um, it fits RSS zoning, there's no rezoning requested, no exceptions. The one road is wide, it's got a cul-de-sac for turning around, and it's got the detention pond in the north. Three of the lots are actually larger than what RSS requires, which helps with that transition to the surrounding areas. Um, this neighborhood will hopefully attract permanent residents and not short-term renters, and can hopefully serve as a model for development going forward. Um, people in my neighborhood have lived here for a long, long time. Um, many of us go back decades, over multiple generations. Um, and we're passionate. We've packed this room because we're so passionate about protecting our neighborhood, because it's who we are. And development, when development is done right, it benefits everybody, not just the people who will live there, but the people who already live there. So, when I got the notice about this preliminary plat, come before the planning commission, I was a little hesitant, as I loaded that PDF on the computer, and I thought, here we go again. Time to start the group text, the phone calls, the neighbors and everything else, and guess what? It was great. I was pleasantly surprised to see this McElroy Park development. Um, I have no objections. And so, thank you to the developers for coming up with not just a workable plan, but a good plan. I appreciate everyone's work to get us here, and I look forward to welcoming our new neighbors. Uh, hopefully, they will come to realize what makes this part of town so special. I often like to tell people, it's the, the best kept secret town. Everyone likes to move out to the west by a country club, but guess what? The northeast part's pretty great, too. Hopefully, they will put down roots that will last for generations, so thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak in favor of this item? Seeing then, I'll ask if there's anyone in the room that would like to speak in opposition to this item. Seeing then, we'll close the public hearing, and ask for staff to return to present, um, findings and alternatives.
Yes ma'am, the proposed preliminary plat meets the subdivision and zoning requirements. The C-three plan, uh, recommends commercial uses at this location. The proposed density is in alignment with the RSS zoning requirements. The alternatives tonight are to, um, approve, conditionally approve, to deny, or to table this request. Staff recommends alternative number one, which is to accept findings and approve the proposed preliminary plat as presented.
Thank you.
I was also very pleased when I saw this. Uh, my, my issue earlier on was the density, this resolves all of that. I, I think it's, uh, critical to that neighborhood, and so I really appreciate the developer and his efforts to do that, uh, and so, um, I was just excited when I saw it.
Any other comments, or perhaps a motion?
I make a motion to accept the findings and approve the McElroy Park preliminary plat as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. Motion passes five-zero. And that concludes the public hearing section of the agenda. The next item is meeting summary for review and possible action. We have a meeting summary for November fourth. And, I had, um, two corrections for names that I sent in, but I don't know if you had time to get those, Ally?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect.
I think you still need to make the motion-
Okay.
With those corrections.
With the corrections, okay. Did anybody else have anything for November fourth? Okay, so it was on?
Page six.
On page six. Sorry, I had it tabbed, and then my tab fell off. Okay, on page six, um, the names of the people that came to speak, um, the third one down should be Steve Trumpler, and the fourth one down should be Bob Hallra. So, um, I would move to accept the minutes as, with the corrections noted. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. Motion passes, uh, four yes and one abstain. The next item is the regular meeting summary of November eighteenth. Are there any corrections on that one?
No, I, my mic's there.
He might want to hit the-
He did. My technical advisor.
I just learned about that earlier today.
I wondered why earlier we couldn't hear. Uh, I want to thank the staff for making the amendment to the notes about my comments regarding the floodplain and risk mitigation on the, uh, urban wildland, uh, fire issue, so appreciate that. So, I move that we accept the minutes of the November eighteenth meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. Motion passes, uh, four yes, one abstain.
I believe it's, sorry.
Oh, oh, there we go. I'm sorry, correction, motion passes with five yes. Um, the next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or city attorney for discussion and possible action?
None of the, the meeting.
Okay, all right, all right, the next regular meeting, uh, listed is in two weeks, on December sixteenth. And the last item on the agenda is adjournment, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote.
It doesn't like me today.
Motion passes five-zero, we're now adjourned.